All right. Good evening, everybody. Sorry we are a little bit late. Apologies. Welcome to our board meeting. I'm now, we're reconvening our open session, and I'm going to ask our clerk to report out any actions taken in closed session.
There are no actions to report at this time.
Thank you for that. Well, you're going to keep going. So we have our invocation led by trustee Inman, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by me. So if you're able, please stand.
In forty-three days, we will celebrate the highest point of democracy in election. Some people call this the silly season. I find that unfortunate and think we can do better. A few years ago, I wrote an op-ed for the Irvine Watchdog entitled, "In Defense of Civility: Logical Discourse." Ironically, the first comment was an ad hominem attack on me. I'm Teflon, I don't care about that. But I was just thought it was sad that he missed the whole point of the op-ed, which was to raise the level of discourse to logic and reasoning rather than negative attacks. Logical dialogue is an important part of a democracy. So I request that each of us participate in civil discourse rather than negative name-calling, insults, and misinformation. It is a privilege of a democracy to be able to have discourse. Honoring that privilege means listening to learn, listening to understand, and speaking at a high level from place of honesty. Whether we are First Gen or Harvard legacy, whether this is our first election or our twentieth, whether we are rich or poor, young or old, whether we are highly educated or just beginning our higher education, we can do better, and we all understand the value of civility, honesty, truth, and respect. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So please join with me in saying our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to our flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, we're going to take a moment right now to honor someone who has been part of this board and this college and this district for a very long time. So ladies and gentlemen, we would like to take this moment to honor the life and service of former South Orange County Community College District trustee Jim Wright, whose commitment to the district and our students left an indelible mark on our community. Jim served on the Board of Trustees with great integrity and purpose, dedicated nearly two decades of his life to advancing the mission of our district. His tenure on the board spanning from 2012 to 2022 saw him champion numerous initiatives that improved the quality of education and access for students throughout the South Orange County Community College District. Jim was a steadfast advocate for student success, a driving force behind expanding programs and services that directly benefited our student body. His leadership was instrumental in key decisions that continue to shape the future of Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. Perhaps Jim's greatest legacy lies in his unwavering support of both colleges, particularly STEM programs, as he was also retired administrator from Saddleback College, who served as dean of the Division of Mathematics, Science, and Engineering. Additionally, trustee Wright was an avid supporter of student veterans and the Student Veterans Services Programs at the colleges, having served as a colonel in the U.S. Air Force for twenty-seven years of active-duty service, including commander of the Air Force Preparatory School. While demonstrating great leadership during his service, trustee Wright's legacy will be one signified by dignity, respect, and dedication to students. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we extend our deepest condolences to Jim's family and loved ones. His contributions will be forever remembered and appreciated by all who had the honor of working alongside him. And I think, you know, I, several of us made a few comments at a couple of board meetings ago. Trustee Wright was, came on the board in 2012. That's the year I was elected. So I had the real privilege of really working alongside trustee Wright for his entire tenure on the board and almost my entire tenure. And I think the words that you think of, that I think of, are embodied in this memoriam tonight is dignity, respect, and commitment to the students. And I think we saw that every single day. Jim was an amazing trustee. He was an amazing asset for the South Orange County Community College District. And he's sorely missed. So with that, at this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Janice Wright to the podium to accept this in memoriam certificate that we have. And I mean, certificate is not enough, but it's what we are able to offer, really as a token of our appreciation for Jim's service and impact. And, you know, I really hope it serves as a lasting reminder for his dedication, service, and commitment to this district. So, Janice?
Sure.
Okay. Absolutely.
I wasn't thinking about it, but I really do want you to all know how much he's being missed, not only from, by you, but by his family and all his dear friends. And I consider all of you on the board his friends. He loved serving. He loved the colleges. And he put up all, I remember the books coming like this. And he went through every page, every time. And he came prepared. And that's just the way he was. And he was thrilled to see the, I don't know what it's called, but the science building got built while he was still here. And so, thank you. Thank you for the recognition. And I just want you to know how much he thought of everybody that was on the faculty and that were administrators and on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice? So, I'd like to take this opportunity to see if any other board members want to make any comments about trustee Wright. Trustee Prendergast?
Trustee Dak? I know you didn't know him.
Sure, I'll say something really quick. I mentioned it at a prior board meeting right after he had passed. I had gotten, there was an email that was sent out. And I'm the only board member up here who never met him. I did run against him once, and he beat me. So he's, you know, that was really my only ever interaction with him. But I did note at the time, and I'll note again now, that, you know, it tells you the quality of a character of a person when they recognize, I've had a great time serving, I've done a good job, but now it's time to go back and be with family and pass the torch on to a new generation. And I'll always be thankful for that. I don't know if, who would come after him, played a role in his consideration, but for me, I got to meet all these great people and be part of this great institution because of the decision that Jim took two years ago. So I'm eternally grateful for that. But I wish I got to know him. I wish I could have served with him because he sounds like a great member of the community.
Thank you for that. Trustee Prendergast?
Yeah, I just wanted to share a couple of memories. One, before he became a trustee, when I first came on board in 2010, he came up to me right away and offered to give me a tour of Saddleback. And I don't think there could have been a better timing and sense of elation for him as we were touring the math building, the old one. It started raining. And he was so excited to show me the water running down the stairs.
That would be Jim.
It was, I just can't even describe how happy he was that he got to me, have me experience that so I could be an advocate for the change, which I was glad to do because it was very impactful. And then, as was alluded to, I don't think I, I mean, we all go through the agenda. We all look at everything that's in there. But no one, save maybe Dave Lang, would go through the agenda as fine-toothed as Jim. He had spelling errors. He had grammar errors. He had so many things picked out. He would go through the minutes and go, "I didn't say that. This person did." And it was insane. It was so amazing. I tried once, and he had what I had anyway, so it didn't matter. And then also, as everyone who was around then knows, before, I guess it got eventually fixed, because I remember the, I remember the meeting when, when the calendar, the academic calendar came up, and he didn't say anything. And we're like, "Jim? No comment on the calendar?" He says, "No, they fixed it."
You stole my last comment.
I'm sorry.
Janice, the academic calendar discussion has never been the same without your.
So, yeah, thank you.
Trustee Inman?
Hi. I didn't really have the opportunity to get to know him very well. I was new, and so I sat where Marcia was, and he sat way down here. And when the meeting was over, everybody was tired, and we just went home. But I did, kind of at the end, the very last night that we were going to be here, that he was going to be here, we were waiting outside because the door was locked, and we didn't have keys. And we started talking. And he said, "You know, I just can't do this anymore." And I've had that feeling sometimes in positions that I've held. And I said, "Yeah, but this is, this is time for grandchildren and the wonderful family kinds of things, and more time to do those things." And we really had a nice conversation that night. And I was wishing that I had been able to see him more. The other memory, the strongest memory, was right back there near the door, was with Dr. Chris McDonald. And you guys were talking about going home because Chris was going to drive him home. And I had this feeling that staff and board just got along really well. And it was kind of early in my situation. And I really loved that because it isn't that we all agree all the time. It's back to the civil discourse thing that I was talking about. You know, we can disagree. We can have different ways of looking at things. But there's, in that case, there was, there was a love that was going on there. And it made me appreciate both people more. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Well, I think trustee Rydel, other than Jim's family, you knew him the longest, who was sitting up here.
Yes. I met him, well, I think I came before him. But I remember when Dixie Bullock went up here to be vice president or president, and I took over her position. And Jim was acting with me to lead the nursing program. And you could have thought that he'd been there for ten years. He was magnificent in his thought. He gave a breath of fresh air with a new angle of how he saw things for the nursing program. And that is very healthy if you've been in one discipline for a long time. And he listened to us when we always asked for more faculty. I think I went to the wrong person. But because we needed more science classes for our nursing students. But one thing I want to share with you is that I had the opportunity to visit him once or twice at his home. And I had no idea what this man was all about before Saddleback. Before Saddleback, I just listened that evening. I didn't even want to leave because he had so many stories to say what he did with the military and his, what do they call it? The category that you're put in. I just remember, and I think I told you before, is that he could not leave the United States. And why is that? Because he might get kidnapped when he came out. His knowledge was so important to others. And I, it gives me, right now, I'm getting goosebumps when I think about it. I've never met somebody like that. You see him on television all the time. But here with somebody in person. And I do want to say that he has a wonderful family. And I want to say he had a wonderful partner who took superb care of him and always thought of him first. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Well, trustee Muchu, who also knew Jim a very long time.
Yeah, I did. And I remember when he was first, we actually appointed him to the board when, and I remember, like, doing some research about him and finding out that he, this would have been his third, his third role, his third, his third job in life because he started out as an Air Force Academy specialist. And then he actually founded a preparatory school, which, which prepared students for careers in the Air Force and worked very hard at that. And then, when he retired from the Air Force and retired from this very prestigious job as head of the preparatory school in the Air Force, he came to Saddleback College as a chemistry professor because he just wanted to help teach students. He loved students. And then he moved into the dean of Math, Science, and Engineering. And he was just beloved by his staff and by all the professors in chemistry and physics and biology. And he had so much depth of knowledge of all of the physical sciences and the biological sciences and the hard sciences that it was pretty incredible. And as a board member, he, when he was, I think the dean, he invited me to visit his temple that was about to be closed, and it was no longer going to be open to the general public. And I came, and he gave, I think Janice and he gave us a tour of the temple. And it was beautiful and so interesting and so inspiring to learn all about the religion that he so fervently believed in and was a part of. And that was a part of his soul and a part of Janice's soul too, and all of their children as well. And then, when we appointed him to the Board of Trustees, he was just such a wonderful board member with his depth of knowledge about the, about as a professor and as a dean and all the roles he held here at Saddleback College and as the dean of the preparatory Air Force School. He was just a wonderful board member. And we'll miss him very much. And I know Janice always took very good care of him and wouldn't let him overextend himself. She was, she was very, she watched over him like a mother hen. It was just wonderful. And so, thank you so much, Janice, for taking such good care of Jim. Thank you. You probably didn't know him.
Chancellor?
So I did not get to work with Jim, but I just mentioned to Janice right now that in one of the most stressful situations that I've been in, an open forum to get the job, a hundred people in the room, and the very first person who walked up to me was Jim. And he just kind of put his, you know, shook my hand, and he just put his hand on my arm. And he looked at me and said, "Nice work." And just, all of that stress that I had just, like, felt so relieved. And I just felt like, what a kind, wonderful, at that point, he was just a kind, wonderful human to me that made me feel like home. And just that interaction, that quick exchange, made me feel like, wow, I belong here. And so, and as I've learned about him over time, obviously, I didn't get to have a lot of interactions with him, I really believe that his spirit is in the foundation upon which we're able to lead this district. And that's just a beautiful thing. So my blessings to you and your family.
Thank you. Janice, it's wonderful that you were able to come tonight. And we're just, we're so honored to have served with Jim. And as you can tell by the comments, the depth of feelings for him and his work and his commitment and his integrity and his attention to detail unmatched. And I know he was a loving husband and a great part of your family. So thank you again. Great. Thank you. Okay. Well, we are moving on in the agenda. So we're now on to public comments. And we do have several requests for public comments. I'm going to call up three at a time. First is Rebecca Flornoy?
Sorry, Robert Flornoy.
Oh, sorry. And then Polly Sanchez. And then Giselle Leftwich. If you're able to come forward, if you are able, to speak at the podium to my left. And then I'll just read up, I'll just, while you're walking up, the other, there's three more. Carmen Mara Hernandez Bravo, Haley King, I think. Okay. And then Ben Smith. And those are all the requests we have for public comments. And just a reminder, each one of you has two minutes. Thank you.
Trustee one, two. Okay, here we go. So I wasn't planning to talk at all, but I was sitting there thinking, okay, maybe I should say something. I've been a part of this district twenty-nine years now, going on thirty. Hallelujah. What I plan to say, I hope it gets into all your spirits and it receives in the atmosphere here I'm about to say. The district's been good to me. Paychecks sometime, benefits. It's all good. I know a lot of things that happen on campus is a blessing for me. The income's great, you know? We get the raises and all that. And I find that this is a blessing district. I came from Orange Coast College. I came here for one reason. I heard about it, so I decided to come. I do know one thing that a lot of the employees out here, IVC, well, what? IVC out here are great employees. I know we have events on campus like a distribution to the students for Thanksgiving and all that. The IVC employees dip into their pockets and more than willing to help the students. Last year, we did forty baskets of Thanksgiving for the students. This year, I think the focus is one hundred. It's quite a bit. God willing, I'm able to get the turkeys free from donations, which is a good thing. But as we know, groceries is getting high nowadays. You could be a millionaire, right? But still, you're going to see that groceries is high. It doesn't matter. You might say, "Oh, that turkey's a little higher now, but it doesn't bother you." You know, you could put money out your pocket, not trying to insult anybody. Put money out your pocket, and it doesn't affect you. But people like us, who are lower, you know, it affects us, you know? And one thing that I am, I am a leader. I've been a leader for over thirty years, leading the community. Fortunately, some of my, I guess negativity is I bring leadership to the campus. Sometimes it's not good. Sometimes it is. But one thing I do know that the classified employees are, they handle their business. They do great things for the community. And even though they may not say and tell you guys or anybody else, but I do know what they do when they help me out to serve your students. And I just want to let you know that they are a blessing to your students. And, you know, we're hoping that we get a good contract and that we retire well. And like I said, I've been there thirty years. Fingers are cramping up a little bit from all the setups, you know, I do out there for the students. But, you know, it's all good. But I just want to say that this district has been a blessing for me, blessing for everybody else. And we just wanted, you know, have a good contract. Appreciate the time you gave me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I start, I just want to clear up, Polly is donating two minutes to me. Polly Sundine?
Okay.
Or I'll talk super fast.
So are you reading, going to read comments from her as well? Or you're going to just provide four minutes of comments?
I guess four minutes of comments.
Any board member object? That's fine. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so this is part two of parity for classified employees. As you know, I spoke at the board meeting last month. And we requested your support in parity regards to the retirement age and supplemental benefits. As a recap, classified employees with ten years of service can retire at age sixty and get benefits from age sixty to sixty-five. But what ends up happening because we can't afford the benefits after sixty-five, our employees are working into their sixties, seventies, and sadly, some into their eighties. And so what we're asking for is parity with administrators, management, and full-time faculty members who can retire at fifty or fifty-five and receive supplemental benefits for life. And in my demonstration, I had done a research and just calculated the savings to the district for salary alone for step eight and longevity minus step one if we all retired. And you'd save 1.865 million a year. save 1.865 million a year. What I didn't know at the time was the cost of the supplemental benefits. I've since been given the cost of that for 2024, 2025. It's 933, according to the report I was given. And the report also indicated that the average increase is 3.5% per year. So tonight, I'd like to walk you through just an example of how much the district would save on one employee alone. And for expediency, I'm going to use myself as the example. My range is at the bottom of page one of three. I'm a 127. I turn 61 in June, and I will have 39 years of service on November 1st. If I retire in June of 2025, the district is already obligated to cover my benefits until age 65 for three years. So therefore, there's no additional cost to the district until year four, which is 28, 29. During year one, it will take the district, based on past history, a couple months to hire a sub and maybe up to a year to get a permanent replacement. So most likely, the new sub and the replacement will start on step one. And the savings in year one, not including PERS contributions, our shift differential is 80,000. That's 50,000 for the salary and 30 for the benefits. In year two, the savings will be an additional 50,000 for the salary. And in year three, it'll start dropping to 46,674 due to step increases. And classified currently have eight steps. The new hire will reach eight step, or step eight, in 23, 34, which coincides with the year that I turn 70. And that's the age I would have to retire in order to maximize my Social Security benefits to pay for the supplemental benefits myself. At that point, I stopped calculating the savings between my salary and the new hire salary, because I'm not working past 70. In 2033, 34, the total salary savings is 374,000, while the cost for supplemental benefits for nine years for myself would be 84,000, for a total district savings of $290,000. If I live 20 years to age 81, the cost of supplemental benefits for 20 years is 291,000, for an overall savings to the district of still $82,000. So after 20 years, the district is still saving money on me. This is a win-win for both the employees and the district, not to mention the right thing to do in regards to granting us parity with administrators, managers, and full-time faculty members. And that's just one story. I have no dire need to retire, other than the fact that I'm a brand-new grandma, and I would like to babysit. And I also would like to spend time with my elderly mother, you know, before she passes. There are many stories throughout the district with classified employees, and I'll just mention a few without any names. I just met a custodian in the evening, and he, actually, we had to call him on the phone because he was home taking care of his wife. He's been here like 30 years in 67, and his wife just had both her legs amputated because she had diabetes. And he was caring for her because she was in extreme pain, and he would like to be able to be home with her full-time to help care for her. We also have an 83-year-old who just fell. She's trying to recover so she can get back to work. And I just think that's so sad, that someone at 83 is working because she needs the good benefits. We have another employee who's been here 27 years. I believe she's 71, and her husband just fell and suffered a traumatic brain injury, which I know all too well, because my father suffered one too. And he's in a nursing home because she can't be home during the day with them. And she would like to retire immediately so she could bring him home, where we all know people heal faster when they're at home. At least that was the case in our situation.
So, no, I really appreciate your comments.
Okay.
I think we're at about five minutes. So can you, you want to conclude?
Yeah, I'll conclude.
Okay.
That's just a few of the stories that we're dealing with.
Can I yield her my time so she can finish?
Oh, I just had one more sentence.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm good. The other one was a person who's been here 30 years, and her husband just died of colon cancer, and her mother has cancer, and she'd like to be home with her too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Haley King. I work at Irvine Valley College. I feel like Giselle stole my thunder. So first off, I would like to thank everybody in the administration and also the board for the chance to be here, for the great benefits that we already enjoy. I'm here specifically to speak for some of the older members of our unit who are working specifically because they need benefits. I'm here to speak for the custodians, for the groundskeepers, for our HVAC crew, for the people that have to crawl around inside of the roofing ducts where there's no air conditioning in the middle of summer, where it's 90 degrees, and they do that every day for years. For them to not be able to retire until age 60, or age 65, or even they reach age 65, and at that point, they've been injured to the point where they almost feel like they can't retire because they need the supplemental, I feel like that's a great shame for them, that they, that they're not allowed parity to the same to what managers or faculty have, that if they injure themselves and they need the opportunity to be able to retire at 55, that that has been lost to them. Because at some point, you think, when you're working in these really stress, like body stressful positions, that the damage that you do to your body almost makes it impossible to be able to retire, because you need those benefits. So I'm just hoping that we're making an impact here for the board, and that you'll think about this during these negotiations that we're going through. And I appreciate everything up to this point, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, Board of Trustees, my colleagues, my classified employee friends, everyone here. I am here today on support of the classified employee at large. They should have the same benefit as I do as a full-time faculty member. But today, I am also honoring the Latina classified employees. The International Language Department would like to honor and thanks all the classified employees at our institution for your support to us and to the Latina community at large. We are very proud of each one of you. You are amazing colleagues. Gerais Garcia, District Director, Chancellor on Board Operation. Judy Perez and Nicole Ortega, Program Research Analyst, Research and Planning Analyst. Raoul Gutierrez, Application Specialist. Vanessa Cortez, HR Specialist. Virginia Romero, Payroll Specialist. Senior Buyer, Angie Gutierrez, EOPS. The mother of EOPS, Lori Parra, Extended Opportunity Program. Thank you, Lori, for being a champion to many communities at Saddleback, but especially to the Latinx and to African-American community. Thanks to you, many of us are professors here today. Admission and record, beautiful friends. Each one of you has been a patriot of our community. Ustedes son magníficas queridas colegas. Elva Ariza, Evelyn Ramirez, Vanessa Mira Pontes, Giselle Heredia, Elsa Chacon, Nancy Ayala, Brian Flores, Andrea McCaff, and Karen Molina. Police Department, Beau, you are the most amazing supporter of the NAI teachers. Beau, you have been a guardian angel to all of us in the International Department that taught at NAI. And now, to let you know some wonderful news, we have a new female policeman at Saddleback College, an Irma Bonilla, so we are so happy to have her. Then we have Janina Joben, Senior Dispassion, Anna Pulvet, Admission Assistant, and Merle Miedel, Police Officer. Then we have in the warehouse, thank you so much for helping and always delivering our books, material, films, and everything we need to our event. You are the best. Julio Bernacci, Jorge Martínez, and Misael Banderas. Ground Department, thank you so much for keeping Saddleback so beautiful. The stadium is impeccable, thanks to you, as well as the tree and plant over campus. Raúl Leal, José Huerta, Alberto Ariza, Luis Silvia, and Rafael Granado.
Carmen Mara.
Basically, thank you so much, and I'm going to send the rest to all them. But thank you so much, and please, let's have the same contract for classified than certified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. How y'all doing? The board members, classified staff, how y'all doing? I'm just here, this is my first time here at the board. My name is Benjamin Smith. I am a lead building and maintenance worker, and I've been working here at Irvine Valley College for like over 20 years plus. I'm just here to give support to all my staff that I have back in the back. Raise y'all hands, crew. So we're here to come here for our support. We're just here to let you know that we do real hard work at our job. We don't hold back nothing. We don't hold back nothing to a point that when somebody comes to our table and says we need this and need that, we give it to them on time. Everything is always on time at our job. All our work ethic is always being good. We always try to support all our staff and members and everybody that what they have are leaning to, their expertise into their job forces. And also, I just want to explain too, as our, being me as a person, I do have very, very respect for the care campus. Care campus at our campus is very important. We have care campus employees among our employees, we have care campus among our students, and also, we try to have care campus among everybody as well on the outside world. Because I feel like when you come here and trying to give your speech to someone, to explain about the situation that's going on, to try to give equal rights to our crew and everybody else. We always trying to make people understand that we're not here to point fingers, but we also trying to be here to support, to give the needs that we have, to give the needs that we need. So on that behalf and stuff among us, I just wanted to say that if y'all happen to think about what y'all negotiation was about, can you please try to think about a positive way to support us? Because we ain't going nowhere. We always going to be here. And we got more years on the chart. So some that's going to be want to retire, that's the situation to the point that they have it on my. Me, I'm 56-years-old, I don't look it, but I'm 56-years-old.
You don't look it.
And I'm going to retire as a good handshake. So I just want everybody to understand that I really enjoy my job, I really love it. I appreciate the offering, the honor that y'all have received to give to us. So I just want you to have much, you know, respect on our behalf and honor of all the good deeds and work that we bring to the campus, to the staff and the employees and the students as well. Thank you, and I appreciate it. Have a blessed night.
All right. Thank you so much for your comments. You really don't look 56. You're doing something right. All right. We'll now move on to, I don't think we have any more requests for public comments, so we're going to move on to board reports. And I guess I'll start out with you, Trustee Melchiker.
Please make sure I see. Thank you, President Jamal, and fellow board members. I'd like to share updates on recent activities that highlight our district's involvement in local and national levels. As many of you know, I have the privilege of serving as the volunteer science advisor for our Mars Rover team, which has been an incredibly credible opportunity to support groundbreaking research and innovations in space exploration. This allows me to return valuable insights and inspiration to our colleges, especially for our students pursuing STEM. It's exciting to see how our educational programs align with these pioneering efforts. I also want to provide an update on the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force, which I helped establish many years ago. I'm proud to say that the campaign strategy I developed for the task force continues to guide our advocacy efforts, ensuring we remain a strong and united voice on legislative issues affecting our four community college districts, the four community college districts in Orange County. Our most recent meeting had a robust agenda, and our chancellor, Dr. Barnes, welcomed and introduced everyone. As we are the current host for the entire academic year, we received legislative updates from Casey Elliott and Joseph Mello from Townsend Public Affairs, and they highlighted the most important legislative developments following the state legislative session. Then we discussed the strategies that our task force wants to attain for the upcoming year. We shared insights, and in these collaborative discussions, we prepared to navigate the political landscape ahead. We exchanged district updates, which provided comprehensive overview of the successes and challenges each of the four districts in Orange County face. I want to emphasize that the strategy, that the strategy, direction, and unity in this task force are the direct result of the work we put in from the very beginning of the founding of the task force. It's gratifying to see how our early efforts have continued to bear fruit, shaping the legacy that still impacts our colleges today. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Melchiker. Trustee Rydell.
This evening, I'm going to take my two minutes and share it when we have our resolutions, but I did want to mention two things. I always like to say something what I did in the community. This time, I was in another community. I was at Orange Coast College, and I walked in the AIDS Walk, and I have to tell you, that was a, not to say it was eye-opening, but I have to tell you one thing, and I'd like you to remember it too. They gave a talk, and they were talking that the walk doesn't end here. And it's true. It doesn't end here, and that made an impact on me. And the second thing, I went to the STAR program that we had here on campus, and I have never watched those programs like Voice or whatever it is on TV, but I got to vote with my phone. And it was, thank you for including us. We were the audience, and we were able to vote for the person who is the star at Saddleback. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Edman.
Hi, I just want to say one thing. I want to thank Dr. Hernandez and others for the commemoration of 9/11. And I go to that every year, and of course, I remember where I was and what happened and how I felt. But this year, more than ever, I was kind of moved by the, I think someone brought their class, but there were a whole bunch of students there, and I realized that they weren't born when this happened. And one of the most important things about our commemorations is to never forget, and in their case, to teach the next generation what happened and what that meant and what it means to all of us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, so on August 28th, we had our first Orange County School Board Association meeting of the year, with Trustee Edman and I, serving in new roles on that board, treasurer for me and representative for her. We discussed upcoming elections and things that are happening in various districts, and that we have our upcoming dinner slash meeting in a couple weeks. So that was informational. And then we had the first responders' dinner on September 12th. It's very, it's very touching that the last two have fallen alongside two very calamitous events. Last year's dinner was right after the Cook's Corner event. They referred back to it again this year, because it's still impacting people's lives that were involved with that. And while the dinner was going on, three major fires were occurring in our area. And it was, we were honored that the fire chief was able to come and make it near the end of the dinner to present an award to some of his people. But it was, it's just, it's really powerful when something like that is happening. And it just seems that so far, the two years that we've gone, it puts a different light and weight on the event. And of course, it was on September 12th, which is the day after 9/11. So they did reference to that as well. But it's just a really, really nice event, and I'm glad we get invited. Even though they don't recognize us, we definitely appreciate being there. All right, thank you.
She's working on it. Inside joke, sorry. Trustee Dak.
So I would also like to share that I attended the Saddleback STAR, which was a fantastic showcasing of the talent at Saddleback. And it was so interesting to see where all of those students came from. It's not just people who were, you know, from San Clemente, like where I grew up. We had people from, I think it was Oklahoma that had come, that are Saddleback students, even students from other countries. I want to say there was a student that was from Indonesia. I might be misremembering, but it just shows how rich of a tapestry we have at both Saddleback and I'm sure by extension, IVC. You know, everyone doesn't just come from one place. It's not all just people who were born here and grew up here. It's people from throughout the country, throughout the state, and throughout the world, in a lot of cases. I'd also like to echo the sentiments Trustee Prendergast shared about the first responders' dinner. I think one of the moments that moved me the most was a first responder, they had the cam video of this first responder, I believe a UCI police officer or resource officer who was responding to someone who was going through a particularly difficult mental health crisis on top of a parking structure. And just to see how that resource officer de-escalated that situation and got that student the help that he needed, I don't know, it meant a lot to me, and I'm sure everyone in the room as well. I'm also proud to share that I'll be attending the IVC Walk of Hope for Suicide Walk that will be going on tomorrow at IVC. So that's just kind of been in my mind before I attend that. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you for that, Trustee Dak. The OCBC dinner, the first responders' dinners was excellent. The law enforcement at Saddleback and IVC do such an amazing job. And they're caring, they're helpful, and at the same time, they keep us safe. So we're really proud to have the law enforcement here. Saddleback Idol was amazing. I did attend. I see Scott Varthings here. Yay. It was great. I mean, the talent was fantastic, and the digital voting aspect was wonderful, and I had a great time. So, and the talent, as Trustee Dak mentioned, is, it's just amazing here at both colleges, in this case, Saddleback College. Very proud to see the display there and the passion. And last thing, I wanted to say, last week, I actually spent a few days in Washington, DC, on a kind of a lightning visit for other work that I do. So I was there with victims, ethnic Armenians who were victims of war crimes committed against them by Azerbaijan over the last few years, and we were able to testify in Congress before the Tom Lantos Human Rights Commission. Very powerful, very moving, very emotional week with them. And it just, I took them, the victims, most of them first time in this country, and I thanked the US Ambassador in Armenia who actually granted, expedited their visas. She didn't have to do that, and she did. I'm appreciative of her doing that. And we took them to the White House at late night, about 11 o'clock at night. And, you know, you go down, if you've ever been to the White House, there's lots of activity taking place there in front of the White House. And you had several people shouting profanities at the White House, which we allow in this country. And what they said to me, if that happened in a country like Azerbaijan, you would be shot right on the spot. And it reminds me the namesake for this room, Ronald Reagan Board of Trustees Room. I remember when I lived in Washington, DC, I used to go over to the National Press Club and read some of his speeches, because I love reading his speeches. Plus, and in addition, they're written by now, a friend of mine, Ken Kachigian, who lives in San Clemente, who was Ronald Reagan's chief speechwriter. And he wrote about freedom. And his speeches, you know, about Reagan's themes were about freedom, and I think it just, it really came true to me at that moment with these victims in this country for the first time, who saw an aspect of freedom that they felt was unusual, but it's freedom. And so I think we should, you know, never, ever take your freedoms for granted. Someone mentioned earlier, time of elections, thank God we have democracy, and it's a system that we all should always cherish and don't ever take for granted. So thank you for that. Let's do it, Trustee Clemente.
Thank you. Good afternoon, all. I just wanted to thank Amy Strange and Effren Rangel and all their support and effort to support my position. They have been kind enough to let me designate office hours, Tuesdays and Thursdays, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM out of the GW Building, Room 261. And at IVC, I will be out of the Student Activities Center Monday and Wednesday from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. I'll be available via Zoom and in-person for all students. So if you're watching here with us, please let students know that I'm here for you and for them. I also have flyers everywhere, or will have flyers everywhere on campus, so it'll have my Zoom link. It's also election season, so ASIVC and ASG are encouraging student voters to register and vote for the November elections. Thank you for all of your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're, we're now going to move on to our ASG reports. And start out with Christian Swazel from Saddleback College.
Good evening, everybody. I'd also, I'd like to quickly extend my condolences to trustee, trustee rights passing, just so you know. I'd also, I'd like to start off with wishing Saddleback College a very happy birthday, September 23rd, 1968. Fifty-six years young. Since we've, since we first welcomed students where actually where Mission Hospital sits right now. But actually, I actually learned that first classes on campus, on the campus that we are sitting here now, started in 1970. So happy birthday, Saddleback College. I'm proud to represent this beautiful campus. Saddleback ASG is going really well with approvals to attend the, the CSO Student Leadership Conference in Los Angeles. We'll be sending six ASG delegates to attend. Our International Diversity Student Council is hosting their first event for Hispanic Heritage Month with a disco fiesta and a loaded nacho bar. It's good. They'll, they'll also be holding a Hispanic Heritage Month art competition with an iPad Air and AirPods as prizes. Our Campus Sustainability Council is holding beach cleanups this week. And I am also continuing to work with student development on election-related events to get our students as, as informed and engaged as possible. We're adding new events with a Don't Ghost the Vote event, which is a Halloween-themed voter registration event. And finally, our ASG has received an abundant amount of student representation requests for campus-wide committees, and we're working diligently to fulfill all of them as fast as we can. And with that, that is the end of my report. Thank you all very much for listening.
Thank you for that report. IVC, ASG Clarice.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. We had our Senate elections start today. We have 52 candidates for nine open Senate seats, which is absolutely incredible. And one lucky senator will be appointed by me to the vacant EVP position. I'm very excited to fill that position. I feel like I really need a, a right-hand person right now, so looking forward to that. We will also have our candidate forum and candidate meet and greet for these 52 candidates this coming Tuesday and Wednesday. We also ratified 67 clubs this semester. The amount of clubs ratified has increased every semester since fall 2019. We started with 25 clubs in fall 2019, and we've increased the amount of clubs on campus by 168% in the past five years. We are also having a Letters to Legislate, Ledger, excuse me, Letters to Legislators event this coming October. And then we will also be attending the CSO retreats that Saddleback is sending their students to. And we have officially planned a entire ASIVC retreat for November 8th through the 10th. And then one of my initiatives this year has been trying to have student representation at at least all faculty hiring committees to ensure that the best educators are hired at IVC. And after sharing that with my advisor, it had come to my attention that it's important to have student representation in hiring committees for positions that directly impact students. So after sharing that with my advisor, she had shared that with VP Martha McDonald. And I was able to be included in the hiring committee. And we also had a student forum for the top three candidates that we were hiring for the Assistant Dean of Students position, which has never happened before at IVC. So I'm really happy to see that the school is willing to include students for positions such as that. So we have since chosen an advisor, and they will begin October 7th. So we are very excited.
Thank you for that report. Now turning to IVC Academic Senate, Rebecca Beck.
Good evening. It's good to see you all. It's always exciting to come together and discuss opportunities that can profoundly impact our students, our faculty, and our broader community. And today, in our agenda, we have item 13.5, which is just that. It is our great opportunity to bring to IVC Dr. Roxane Gay, who is a celebrated writer, professor, and cultural critic, known for her influential work on topics related to feminism and the intersections of identity and power. Please allow me to share with you how her visit, which is funded by a state grant our Ethnic Studies Department receive, aligns with our district goals and priorities. First, in terms of educational quality, Dr. Gay's expertise will enrich our academic programs by supporting instructional development and guided pathways. Her insights into literature, cultural criticism, and thoughtful dialogue will resonate with faculty across multiple disciplines and encourage our students to engage in rigorous academic debate, preparing them for higher levels of study and career success. Sorry, I just got over the flu. Moreover, her visit will directly contribute to equitable student access and success, which is a core goal for this board. Dr. Gay is a vocal advocate of diversity, equity, and inclusion, principles that we're deeply committed to in our district. Her presence will inspire students from all backgrounds and give a voice to those who may not always feel seen and heard, further strengthening our DAI efforts and recruitment strategies. Additionally, from a community engagement perspective, Dr. Gay's national reputation will draw attention not only for our campus, but for our writer community, helping us increase the visibility of our district and enhance our external relationships. This event offers a significant platform for trustees to interact with students, faculty, and local four-year partners, creating a powerful opportunity for dialogue and connection. On a side note, she will be speaking at Chapman University this Wednesday at 7:00 PM, but unfortunately, her tickets are sold out. Okay, I know I'm over, but just quickly, this is more than just a speaking event. And this is what I share with you. It's an investment in the intellectual and emotional growth of our college community. By inviting Roxane Gay, we're aligning with our district's vision to foster resilience, advance education, and elevate our standing as a leader in equity and engagement. I hope you will join me in supporting this opportunity as it will undoubtedly leave a lasting impact on our students, our faculty, and the broader community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for that report and update. We're now going to turn to the Faculty Association. I don't think Robert Belinda is, obviously, he's not here with us tonight. It's Deanna Sugar.
Yes, that's me.
Welcome, Deanna.
Hi, it's very nice to see you all. Good evening. So I'm Deanna Sugar. I teach English at IVC, and I'm the Faculty Association President-elect. And so our update for tonight includes a few things. First and foremost, our membership is now voting on the tentative contract over the next week that we have with the district. And we'd like to thank the Faculty Association Negotiations Team, led by Claire Cesario, who put in many hours of work, and the many faculty who came out to board meetings to communicate with you all and to share their experiences. But we also want to have a sincere thank you to Dr. Visca-Chill and the district team, and you, the Board of Trustees members, for working with us so that we can come to an agreement that starts to move us closer to having higher salaries for new full-time hires, raising the part-time parity, and moving us closer to closing the gap between the rising costs of living in Orange County and our salaries. We also have two faculty who have retired recently that we wanted to acknowledge. Glenn Stevenson, who worked at Saddleback as a mechanical drafting and CAD instructor, who's retiring after 14 years of service to the district. And Kay Riles, who's retiring after 20 years. And I was fortunate enough to have Kay as a colleague in the English department for the last 10 years that I've been there. And she also was the honors coordinator for the last 11 years. So she initiated the IVC Saddleback Research Symposium and was also crucial in growing honors membership, establishing honors curriculum across campus, and building the culture of research that we just celebrated at the board meeting last month. And finally, we want to acknowledge the hard work that our classified staff does. I know that I saw several people in the audience who were crucial to me and my job several times across the years. And what they do really does keep our colleges going. So thank you to them for speaking and being here tonight. Thank you for your time. That concludes our update.
Thank, thank you for your update. I don't see IVC Classified Senate. Is that correct? There's nobody here? Okay, so Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Good evening, trustees and Chancellor Lawrence, sorry. I just wanted to share, just last week, Saddleback Cares had their Elevating Campus Culture Event on our campus on Thursday and Friday. And I wanted to say that Leah Falbeck, who you all have taken, which is fine, Violetta Saheri, Elliot Kling, and Stephanie Reyna, along with about 30 of our folks who went to the Disney Institute on Customer Service. They developed this program. It was a four-hour program that was delivered over once, four hours each, those two days done twice so that folks could attend. And it was fantastic. They took us on a journey of a student who was coming to Saddleback, any obstacles that my, that student might face, and then also how the five behaviors that are espoused by caring campus helps that student succeed and how our professionals on our campus really take the lead in helping that student through the process of, from the very start to graduation. And I would, I'm so thankful to President Seren for participating and showering, literally showering our student actor with confetti and graduation applause. And, and it was such a nice event. I hope you take the time to view the recording that, I think Rema might still be in the audience, that actually did the recording for us. So it was a wonderful event. Saddleback Classified has been part of many, like, welcomes, orientations over the past month. And I just want to say, this is kind of off script, but I'm so proud to be part of our classified professionals community here. We are educators, and I'm so moved by all the things that they say and all the things that they do. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have CSEA President Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Board. We are very grateful and thank you to the faculty for their support of the classified. We appreciate their very kind comments. One of the things that we take pride in is being educators, as was mentioned by Erlynne Bala just a few minutes ago. Because of the fact that we are the front line. Saddleback and IVC have taken a lot of credit for some of the successes that have happened nationwide. For example, both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College share in having the same student who actually went on to a career to win an Academy Award. The choreographer from Michael Jackson came to Saddleback College to learn behind the scenes. We had a student who went to Saddleback College, took the radio courses, ended up with a national radio show for Fox Sports. We have another student who is now a regular sportscaster in Kansas City after attending both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. And we have more stories like that because of the fact that these things may not happen without the classified professionals being able to open the labs, being able to support the students, making sure that they have the success. We value ourselves very much, and we want to be able to display that value to our students, to our managers, to our administrators, to the district. And we're hoping that moving on in the future, that we continue to do so because the students that come through our schools and through the courses, they also can be our future leaders who will be taking care and administering and being the stewards of our lives. So we thank the Board for very much taking the time to listen to the classified professionals, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Scott, for that. I don't think we have anyone here from the POA. So then we're going to move on to Board Request for Reports. Don't think we have any. We don't have any public hearings. So we're now on to our resolutions. 6.1, resolution for trustee Barbara J.
Item 6.1, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to former trustee Barbara J. for her outstanding service, dedication, and contributions to the district. Before the motion, we have someone trustee would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to say a few words about Barbara J. We have the honor of celebrating this remarkable service of trustee Barbara J. from 2015 to this year, 2024. Barbara's journey on this board has been one of dedication, commitment, and compassion. Following in the footsteps of her late husband, Bill J., she continued his legacy with great, with grace and determination, stepping up in time of need and ensuring that our community continued to benefit from strong and engaged leadership. Barbara, your contributions have been instrumental in shaping the directions of our district. From advocating for student success to championing important initiatives that have strengthened our college, your voice on the board has been invaluable. You have not only honored Bill's legacy, but have built your own, a legacy of service, integrity, and tireless advocacy for our students, faculty, and staff. Barbara's presence will be deeply missed, but her impact will undoubtedly endure. I hope that returning, retiring from this chapter of service supplies her with great fulfillment and pride as she served well in this role. Barbara, please know that your dedication has left a lasting mark on our district, and we are all better for it. We wish you all the best in your well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Barbara, and thank you.
President Jamal.
Thank you, trustee Edman, and thank you, trustee Rydel, for those heartfelt comments about trustee J., who has retired effective at the end of August. She did retire from the district. And Bobby, as we called her, Bobby was amazing. She, she was, you saw the public side to her here, but we also get to see her in closed session, which some of you, of course, don't get to see, but we do. She's resolute. She's principled. She is so dedicated to the, this district, to the faculty, to the students, to the classified staff, to the administration, very supportive, heaping, always heaping praises on, on all of the, all of the employees of the district. And, and I, I, you know, it, it's hard to find someone as principled as Bobby to work with. And, and when I first went on the board, I actually sat at that end in Ryan's seat. And I sat next to her husband, Bill J., who was also amazing in his own right, with an incredible sense of humor. And one thing about Bobby is also she, she cared a lot about taxpayer dollars. She was a fiscal hawk. She counted every penny that came out of this district to make sure it was geared towards improving student success and improving the educational programs that we have. So we miss her. I'm glad she appears to be enjoying retirement. And with that, trustee Edman, I'll let you conclude the item.
Okay. Could we have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, we will now vote.
Okay, the resolution carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Okay, 6.2.
6.2 Suicide Prevention Week. Be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees declare the week of September 8th through September 14, 2024, as Suicide Prevention Week in the South Orange County Community College District, and that all employees and students raise awareness through various initiatives, events, or programs. Can we have a motion?
Second.
We will now vote.
The resolution passes unanimously with a student trustee yes vote. Now we're on to 6.3.
Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month. Be it resolved that- Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby declare September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month, and encourage all students, staff, faculty, and members of the public to honor the transformative contributions that have been made to our community. May we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we will now vote.
The resolution passes unanimously with a student trustee yes vote. Now, we're finally on to 6.4.
Be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District declares October 14 through 18, 2024, and every third week of October thereafter, as Undocumented Student Action Week, to work in partnership with other organizations, the California Community Colleges, and the Community College League of California to engage in activities supporting undocumented students. May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We will now vote.
Motion pass, I mean, the resolution passes unanimously on a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. That concludes our resolutions. We're now on to Board of Trustees and Chancellor item 7.1, Authorization of Payment to Trustee Absent from Board Meeting. Do we have a motion?
So. Second.
Motion from trustee Rydel, second from trustee Milchiker. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Roll call. Okay.
Trustee Dak.
Aye.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J. Oh, sorry. Sorry. I had her on my list. Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente.
Aye.
So, the motion carries unanimously with a student trustee yes vote. Now, is this going to be a roll call throughout the section here? Okay. 7.2 Biannual Ethics Training, Chancellor and Trustee Travel, Trustee Compensation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion trustee Dak. Second from trustee Prandergast. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 7.3 Board Member Representative to the Irvine Valley College Foundation. Chancellor, are you going to present the item, or someone else?
So, I can. So, what's happening is that trustee Bobby J. used to be the designee from the Board to the IVC Foundation. And obviously, with her resignation, that leaves a vacancy. And so, her appointment was to be through December of 2024. So, what we're seeking is a replacement, a temporary replacement for that duration through December of 2024.
Would anyone like to do it?
I would like to put forward trustee Inman.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I accept.
Who is the, who is the... I know, but who's the designee as the backup?
Do we have?
Was there one? There wasn't an alternate?
No.
I don't think we had an alternate. No. Okay, so, we have a motion, trustee Dak, and a second from, I think, trustee Milchiker to have trustee Inman serve as the Board Representative to the IVC Foundation in light of trustee J.'s resignation. Okay? Anybody want to say, any comments?
No, I think trustee Inman would do a great job.
I have a comment.
Oh, sure.
I would just say that while we both represent portions of Irvine, Carolyn is such a big advocate for IVC and IVC students, and I'm working my way up there, but I can't think of anyone who would better serve on the faculty, or excuse me, not the faculty, the IVC Foundation's Board. Her involvement with the college is just so great. So, they're going to be lucky to have her on there.
All right, well, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries unanimously with a student trustee yes vote. Trustee Inman, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now, we're on to 7.4 Board Policy Revision. This is for review and study. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second trustee Dak. Any questions or comments on the revisions for review and study? No? Board Policy Committee did a good job then. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We do not have any presentations or discussion items, so we're now moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any polls from trustees? No? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the entire consent calendar.
Okay, motion trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Is that trustee Dak? Second trustee Dak. Any questions? No? Let's vote on the consent calendar. Oh, it just came up now. The motion carries on a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now, on to Business Services, 10.1 Electric Cars for IVC. Award of a Bid to Pappy, Papay, Material Handling. Papay, Material Handling. Do we have a motion? Motion trustee Rydel.
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. Any questions? No? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. 10.1 is unanimously approved with a student trustee yes vote as well. 10.2 Irvine Valley College Third-Year Sub-Award Agreement with Concordia University. Do we have a motion? Motion from trustee Prandergast.
I second it.
Second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions or comments? No? Let's vote on the item. The motion carries unanimously with a student trustee yes vote. Now, we're on to 10.3 Resolution 2414, Improve the Change Order Number Five With the Inter-Pacific Company for Lighting and Related Controls for Campus-Wide Lighting Upgrades at Irvine Valley College. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. Any questions? No? Okay, let's vote on the item. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 10.4 Award of Professional Services Agreement for the Development of the District Strategic Plan and Facilities Master Plan to Gensler. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. And I do have an impromptu question, because I think this is an important item. Vice Chancellor Gable, not to put you on the spot, but I think it's an important item if you want to just summarize what we're doing here.
Certainly. So, what we have here is a contract to update the district strategic plan, as well as an update to the facilities master plan. Our strategic plan is almost five years old now, so we're trying to get it done with that five-year cycle. And then, just as far as the facilities master plan goes, looking at it, just kind of updating it and refreshing it to make sure that the master plan is in alignment with the changes that have been occurring lately, specifically related to the change in modality after the pandemic, to make sure that we're still on the right path with the facilities master plan.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead, and we have motion, a second. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Oh, it just came. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. On to 10.5 District Warehouse Canopy at IVC. Award of Bid to Sanders Construction Services. Do we have a motion? Motion from trustee Prandergast.
I'll second that.
Second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions? All right, let's vote on the item. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 10.6 Annual Financial and Budget Report and Revised 2024-25 Adopted Budget for the Capital Outlay Fund. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. Any questions? All right, let's vote on the item. Motion carries unanimously and includes a student trustee yes vote. We are now moving on to Human Resources, 11.1, Academic Employees and Management Personnel Actions and Ratifications. Nice new title.
Thank you. No changes.
No changes to the item.
And I'd like to mention some.
Let's move it and second it, and then we'll.
Okay, I'll move it.
Motion trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second trustee Dak. Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, two of these names were already mentioned by the Academic Senate President, but I'd like to mention four employees that have been, served the district for a long time, and we thought we'd honor them as they leave. Herb Richter was the IT District Service and worked for almost eight years. Kay Riles, who I remember was the English instructor and also the head of the Honors Program at IVC, and served the district for twenty years. And Glenn Stevenson taught mechanical drafting and CAD at Saddleback College for almost fifteen years. And Corey Wathan, the Vice President of College Administrative Services, who served the district for over six years. And once more, we thank all these people. We don't have resolutions for them, but we thank them for their many years of service to the district. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments, questions? All right, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. 11.2 Classified Personnel Actions and Ratifications.
No changes.
Changes to the item.
Okay, so moved, but I have one person to mention.
Okay, motion trustee Milchiker. Second trustee Prandergast. Trustee Milchiker.
Just one person, who's Elva Ariza, who's the Lead Admissions and Records Evaluator at Saddleback College, who worked almost thirty-five years for Saddleback College, and thank her for her years of dedication at Saddleback. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? No? Let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. 11.3 Faculty Association Tentative Agreement. Agreements for many articles.
President Jamal, may I make a brief statement?
You may.
So, it's going to take you ten seconds to vote on an item that took both teams an entire year to build and to come to an agreement to, and that's a year of our lives. I want to make sure the Faculty Association understands how much the district respects and acknowledges their professionalism at the table and their experience. Deanna Sugar is the only one on the team that's here tonight, but I want to acknowledge each of their members. And Deanna, tell me if I miss anyone. Deanna Sugar, Louis Long, Mark Blethyn, Robert Melendez, Jenny Langrell, Susan Bliss, and Chief Negotiator. The only one that feels my pain ever is Clara Cesario. She's an excellent chief negotiator. From the district, we have some folks in the audience today. The district's team was Dean Penny Scaff and Angel Hernandez, Christina Hinkle, Tracy Fahimi. Vice Presidents Rick Miranda, Dr. Jennifer LaBounty, Dr. Martha McDonald, Tranvo Kumamoto, and Executive Director at the District Connie Kavanaugh. I also want to thank and acknowledge Anne Marie and her staff. Everything that's economic has a cost, and her team spends a lot of time making those, crunching the numbers to give us what those costs look like. So, my sincere gratitude to the Faculty Association, and thank you, trustees, for voting tonight.
Well, and thank you for that. Just say a few words. I echo everything that you say, trustee Viskachill. You elevated her again. I mean, Vice Chancellor. I did that in Michigan. I elevated you. Vice Chancellor Viskachill. Sorry. Maybe not sorry. No, we appreciate the work that you did and your team, and we appreciate the work of the Faculty Association. And most importantly, we appreciate the work of the faculty. We know how important the faculty is to making this district and these two colleges as great as they are. When we see things like Irvine Valley College being ranked the number-one college in California, and Saddleback College being ranked the number-five college in California, we're going to get you one and two, it's going to happen, or two and one, it will happen. And number five in the nation and number fourteen in the nation. And a big part of that, of course, is the faculty, and we know that. And so, I think the Board feels grateful to have this, looks like this agreement moving forward. And I think it bodes well for this district to continue to grow and improve and innovate. Just because we're as good as we are and we're proud as good as we are, we can always get better, and I think we will. And I think this agreement is part of that.
So moved.
All right. Motion from trustee Prandergast.
Second.
Second from trustee Milchiker. Any other comments? All right, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. Very good. All right. 11.4 POA Tentative Agreement for Article Six Pay and Allowances. No? Okay. Is there a motion? Do we have a motion? Motion from trustee Prandergast.
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the item. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. We're now on to 11.5 EEO Plan Certification Form 2023-24. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Dak.
Second.
Second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. 11.6 POA Master Agreement. Can I have a motion? Motion trustee Prandergast.
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. We do not have any items under Educational and Technology Services. We'll be moving to our information items. 13.1 Staff Response to Public Comments from the Previous Board Meeting. The 2025 Teachers of the Year Recognition Ceremony, which is in December or November?
November 1st.
November. The Monthly Financial Status Report. The Financial, I'm sorry, Facilities Plan Status Report. And then, 13.5, I think was what we mentioned earlier, the Saddleback College and IVC Speakers. All right, seeing no comments on those items. We'll now go on to our reports from the administration, starting with Chancellor Barnes.
Great, thank you so much. I just wanted to also add my thanks to the various negotiating teams, the POA and the FA, for working harmoniously with administration, and in particular to Vice Chancellor Viskachill for your work and bringing that across the line. And obviously, I know it takes a village as well to make sure that that happens. And I do also want to thank our classified professionals for spending some time today at the podium and sharing your thoughts and sentiments. And I'm hopeful that we will also be able to reach an agreement with our CSEA soon. So, thank you. It really does take a village and an ecosystem, and we don't function without all of you. So, I think everyone plays an important role in this district. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And then, the only other thing I just want to make mention of, it was mentioned a little bit here in the Board, you just approved the contract with Gensler. Very excited to be able to work with all of you as we embark upon the development of our new strategic plan 2030. I am establishing a Chancellors Planning Commission made up of thirty-six individuals, and we will be working diligently throughout the year. And it's not going to just be those thirty-six. We're going to be working with all the various constituent groups, with the existing planning teams from the colleges. We'll be working with our students and setting up student engagement opportunities as well. And what I love about this is that we get to establish the future direction, the new vision of our district and our colleges moving forward. And then, as was mentioned, we'll also be able to update concurrently our facilities master plan. So, I'm super excited to dig in with all of you and do that work to really kind of set the course for the future of our district. Thank you so much.
Chancellor, thank you for that. Now, moving on to IVC College President, John Hernandez.
Thank you, Board President Jamal. Both of these items are in my Board President's report.
Both of these items are in my Board President's report. However, I did want to elevate them in these closing comments. The first is what I think is a wonderful example of a community partnership, which is so important as a community college. And that is that the United Way of Orange County and IVC, for the past decade or so, have been partners in offering free tax preparation services for low-income residents in our community at IVC. We received recently the Spring 24 Update and Stats from the United Way, and I wanted to highlight those. We had 135 volunteers and staff. We offered 10 free tax preparation days last spring. We were able to assist 340 low-income federal tax returns and 331 low-income state tax returns that were prepared at IVC. Mind you, the adjusted average adjusted gross income of taxpayers served was $29,874. That saved taxpayers over $85,000 in tax preparation fees, and they received total refunds in the amount of $448,874. I want to thank, in particular, Professor Don Bradshaw, who has been the key contact with the United Way. And then lastly, I wanted to congratulate Professor Kurt Meyer. He recently received a pin that I was able to give to him from the National Phi Theta Kappa for 20 years of service as the PTK Chapter Advisor. I think it's much more worthy than a pin. I wanted to make sure to acknowledge him publicly and just thank him for his dedication and commitment. Thank you.
Great, congratulations to Kurt, former FA President, and just a really great member of this community here. Saddleback College President, Elliot Stern.
Thank you, President Jamal. I just want to highlight some upcoming events. Christian Suazo mentioned tomorrow his disco fiesta outside the bookstore in our new side quad that runs from 12 to 2. Does feature a nacho bar, it's true, but we do have a little saying at Saddleback, it's if you eat the nachos, you got to dance. On Saturday, its homecoming kickoff is at 6 o'clock. We also have our first-ever tailgate party at 4 o'clock, so please consider bringing your car and goodies for the tailgate party and then joining us for the football game at 6 o'clock. And then I want to highlight October 18th, since we won't have a board meeting before then, is Word Fest from the School of Humanities and Social Science, an entire day of celebration of guest speakers, guest readings of spoken and written word. Please join us for that on October 18th. And lastly tonight, I just want to pay homage to my retiring VP, Corey Wathen. One of my first hires, served us for almost six years, earned a reputation for trust and integrity very quickly right out of the gate, and has maintained that throughout that period. Corey bought to us something very important and something that we really needed, moving from a resource allocation process that I would generously describe as discretionary to one that was driven by strategic goals and vetted through a shared governance process with a very objective rubric. He was also instrumental in guiding us through much of the COVID response. I always remember his IT team, our IT team handing out laptops like crazy on December 13th to get everybody out of there in one quick day. A tough time, and he guided us through that unflappably. And lastly, just to emphasize the importance of the work that he does, these positions come and go, and the tenure of presidents and VPs and chancellors is increasingly getting short, so I'm glad that we had him for almost six years. He's made a big difference in our college and the legacy of our college going forward, so I want to thank him for his service and his translucent green visor and that little rubber thumb caught to count money will be hard to fill. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services, Chris McDonald. Thank you. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, Cindy Visca-Chill.
Thank you. Just briefly, I think I've served as chief negotiator for the last 17 years in different districts, and I've never made a statement related to an active negotiation, but I want to speak directly to our classified professionals. We are working toward a agreement. I think I speak on behalf of Tiffany Lopez, Chief Negotiator, and Scott Ferguson-Green. We see you. We hear you, and I think both sides are very confident that we'll have an agreement very soon, so thank you for your patience.
Well, that's positive to hear. Thank you for that update. And lastly, Vice Chancellor for Business Services, Anne Marie Gable.
Yes, just real quickly, just to inform the board that Advantech, our newest tenant over at ATEP, has broken ground, and so they themselves are planning a groundbreaking ceremony on October 10th from 9:00 AM to 11:30, so hopefully that is on the board members' calendars. I know some of you may not be able to attend, I apologize, but we're working with their schedules, not ours, but very exciting that they have broken ground.
Great. Well, on that high note, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening, and have a good night.